A bit late today, we are in closed, so it took a little longer than what I expected. I want to welcome everybody here tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we're going to have any conflict of interest amongst council members, and then I'll give you... Seeing none, okay. We're going to get a closed meeting report from Art Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just to advise that earlier this evening, council did meet in closed session pursuant to sections 239, 2B, 2C, and 2E of the municipal act. And what I can report coming out of that closed meeting session is that council was provided with a report and discussion ensued concerning a town employee performance evaluation. Council received information and provided direction concerning a potential acquisition of property. And council received an update on legal matters affecting the municipality. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Rob. Could I have a motion to adopt the published agenda tonight? Councillor Bjorkman and Councillor Yaren, all in favor? Mr. Carey, go ahead.
My apologies, Mr. Mayor. I was advised that councillor Verbeek may have two notices motioned.
Okay, great. Go ahead, councillor.
So, through your chair, if that's her wish, then when we get to the appropriate spot in the agenda...
You want to do it then? Okay, good. Great. And I need the adoption of the regular council meeting for September 16th. I need a mover, please.
Sorry. Mr. ... My apologies. Did we receive a motion on the adoption of the agenda as amended?
Yeah. No? Okay, I need that motion, please. Deputy Mayor Malash and councillor Verbeek, all in favor? Mr. Carey. And now I need the adoption of the regular council meeting for September 16th, please. Mover. Councillor Bjorkman and councillor Van Endall, all in favor? Mr. Carey. Thank you. And we're going to go right into public presentations and it's going to be on the people that attended AMO, okay? And I think we're the ones that attended AMO. I think we're all going to speak a little bit on it. And if we want to start, I guess... Yeah, you go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just tell you when to... We'll just... Yeah, because I'll drive it, so... Okay. Thank you, Your Worship. So, there was a number of councillors and myself that attended the AMO conference, the general meeting in Ottawa. It's been held in Ottawa the last few years. I just wanted to pull together council's experiences through that. We met with a set of ministers regarding various topics that council had presented. This is kind of a closed-loop session for the members of the public in the audience to hear what this council experienced there, what they talked about, and those types of initiatives there. So, Rob, who's got the controller there? Okay, if you can just go back to the title page. Yeah, so... Or the next page, sorry. The conference... AMO, for those of you that don't know, it's the Association of Municipalities of Ontario. There is 444 municipalities within Ontario that are part of this nonprofit organization. It's really... The general meeting is where you get together with both administrators and politicians of all levels from all over the province to discuss issues within our municipalities, concerns, topics that affect all of us, whether they're infrastructure topics, you know, cannabis topics, policing topics. So, you know, it's really valuable, not just for the sessions with the ministers, it's valuable for those sessions that are happening offline, when you're talking to fellow councillors, when I'm talking to fellow CAOs, and, you know, conferring over those experiences and how you can be better. So, you can bring back a lot of ideas, you bring back some motivation to be better in those areas. So, with that, the first set of ministers was the Mike Harris Jr., actually, son of Mike Harris, who is the parliamentary assistant to the Minister of Natural Resources. And Mayor Snively is going to take us through that slide.
Thank you, Chris. Well, when we met, I brought forward the problem we have with pragmities, you know, blocking our drainage and our waterways. And it's affecting farm operations too through drainage. But what we understand, what we understand there is, there is a new chemical that was... is being tried down east. Do you remember the location, Chris?
Sir Tom.
Around St. Thomas area, and it seems to be working. So, the word was they would be moving that chemical this way if it works down there, which is good, because it does create a major, major problem for drainage, and it's very costly for ditch cleaning and that. So, that was one thing. And then we talked about shoreline protection, which is a big, big issue. You know, as municipal level here, we really took charge of that. And right now, we are in the process, well, it's in place now, of getting loans through the credit union, Liberal Credit Union, and helping our residents out here, which is good. But we did bring it forward to the Minister of Natural Resources, and they are aware of the problem. They have been in, not down in this area. They were supposed to come down here and tour the area, they haven't did it yet, but they have toured some parts of lake area, and they know there's a problem there. They are working on something there. Hopefully, it comes in early 2020, hopefully, but we do need help. So, that was my part, and I guess you can continue with the...
Next one, Chris.
Next one. Minister of Transportation or Tourism, Culture. Yeah, this was a good one, because when we were there, and there was announcement made by Ford, putting, I think it was $400 million into sports complexes and sport facilities, which was great news, because I think we're going to be the first to apply for a $20 million grant for our recreational facilities on the other side, number three. Hopefully, that happens, and we really, really pushed. We really pushed that one. So, that was good. And then on the multi-use trails, that was good on funding for alternative transportation and connecting all our municipalities in Essex County, which we are presently doing. If you go along County Road 50, we already are connecting to Kingsville, and Kingsville's coming this way, which hopefully, there's more funding that comes down the road for that. So, that's the two that I went to, and... Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So, one of our last meetings was with Carolyn Mulroney, the Minister of Transportation. It was a little different than the other meetings with the ministers, because we had such a specific topic to discuss with her. You know, the other topics in terms of natural resources, culture and tourism, you're asking for those higher level, you know, issues, whether they're pragmities or shoreline. With the Minister of Transportation, we got into the real granular details on the expansion of the highway and how it's going to affect the town of Essex. So, I think she was taken a bit back in terms of how detailed-oriented we were. She had her engineering staff there as well. So, it was really reiteration for her engineering staff and to keep them accountable in all the discussions that I've had with them, probably pushing 10 years now on that file. What was interesting in that room of ministers, ministers aides, you know, her engineering team, I was the person with the most experience on that file. So, we really made sure she connected and listened on how the overpass is going to impact our stormwater management design, how the expansion and making sure that the trail system that we value so much here is connected, and that things have changed, right? Since they decided, started this design on the highway, we didn't have the cipher system trail, we didn't have the 70 acres of potential sports fields across the street. So, because of that, we forced them to change their design to expand the width of the overpass that they originally have. Subsequently, I've met with the engineering team, they are going to do that. So, they are incorporating all those comments and making sure that those things are in place. You've seen drill rigs out there, they're looking at soil samples, they're really pushing to get this design, as far as detailed design done, by the end of the year. So, it's a positive thing in terms of commitment on when it's going... When it's going to be built exactly, that I don't have, but with the detailed design and getting that next step completed, it's a positive. You have another slide coming up. So, the next one was with Minister Yurk, the Minister of Environment, Conservation of Parks. I'll let Morley tackle that one.
Yes, we had a good meeting with Mr. Yurk. Very non-committal, but at least he listened. And obviously, the algae blooms are something that's becoming very important in our area. And as we pointed out, obviously, the weather is having a major, major factor on this. But something else we drove home is that we believe that not only the farm nutrients draining in there, but failing septic systems may be a common contributing factor. And since he's in a... His jurisdiction is also in a, I guess you would consider a summer-type residential areas, I think he realizes there are some issues in his area as well, because he seemed to nod that that was an issue where he came from. So, the problem is, at this point, there's no major funding out there to address those type of problems, and that's the point we were pointing home. The second item was with regard to the farms and maybe some buffer zones might be a good idea. But the other point we pointed out is, if there are some pilot projects that they would like to try, we would certainly be open to those type of things in our area to, you know, try some new ideas. So, overall, I think all our meetings with the ministers are good. If you're pointing out things, some, they obviously listen, and if they're getting the same message from a number of places, they'll be much more receptive to doing things. So, that was it for Mr. Yurk.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Van Endall?
Yeah, I think it's important for viewers and citizens to know that these meetings were very short and very fast. It was 15 minutes, you know, boom, 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 you had your chance to make a case, and they either smiled or didn't smile. As has been said, they're very non-committal. But we did get good feedback, like body language and a few other things, on how they feel about some of these issues. So, as the rest of council and staff know, I have a particular interest in broadband and trying to get better broadband for the whole town. And I've been doing some research into it, and I wrote a paper about six months ago for the rest of council, sort of laying out our options and who is likely to come in here and try to serve us or soak us up, as it were. And so, I laid this out quickly for the minister, and Ms. Scott said, "Well, you've got SWIFT, you've got the southwestern Ontario internet, whatever it's called, we've got some money, and they're going to take care of you." Well, she seemed to be surprised when I told her that the last contact we had with SWIFT was a report they gave to council in these chambers last summer, and I was in the audience as a civilian listening. And we were told, "Well, yeah, we are working on it, but we can't tell you what we're doing, it's a secret. And we do have a map of where we're going, but we can't tell you what it is." And so, the minister found this very surprising, and she said she would look into that, which was encouraging. Now, we are going to get better internet service in town, we know that. We've got half a dozen companies that have encircled us and are sniffing around, and several of them are interested in providing various levels of services. What my concern is, and I think the concern of some others on council, is that some of these companies want to cherry pick the densely populated areas in the towns and along the lake, and they want to abandon all the properties in the middle of the town to our own devices. And we're already at our own devices, and they're not very good. We've got, some of us have some very bad internet, including me, paying a lot of money for slow service that's quite intermittent. So, this is affecting our development and our property values, and it's less a desirable place to live if you can't get access to good internet. And like we're seeing, our school boards now telling kids they have to do this on the internet, they have to do that on the internet. You know, what happens if you have three kids and a wonky connection? How do those kids do their homework? We have to have this. So, some of these companies have been approaching the town, and so, we just laid this all out quickly for the minister. She did remind us that there are several hundred million dollars in the SWIFT fund, and some of the money's being spent to the north of us, some of it's being spent to east, Lennox, Haldeman, I think some of it's around Branford. We still don't know how we're going to get access to that money. We do know the town is already crisscrossed with some very big fat bundles of fiber, which is almost all dark and unused, and we don't have access to tap into that, which seems crazy, since we helped pay for it. So, anyway, things are going to move on this file. We don't... Things are going to change soon, but we don't know exactly where we're going with this. We're going to get better internet for some people in town, we hope to get it for everybody as soon as possible.
Thank you, councillor. I guess councillor Verbeek. Oh, I'm up? Okay, I guess... Sorry about that, councillor. Okay, I can speak very briefly on this one here. Ford made an announcement, which was very impressive. I was so happy to hear, and I think everybody that attended AMO was very happy to hear about hospitals. They are... Ford said they're going to put $17 billion into new hospitals and revamping hospitals, which is good news. It's good for us, because we know what's happening out there on 42 there with the new hospital being built. It's going to benefit all of us, and to see that type of money being put into healthcare, I think it impressed everybody that was at that meeting that day. So, that's all good news. And councillor Bowman already spoke on the algae bloom, and yes, I brought up the issue on... Back in the days, there was, I think it was back in 2001, I think there was a program out there, and it was run through IRCA, where there was grant money available to upgrade your septic systems. And when I brought that issue forward to the ministry there, they didn't know a thing about it. They said that we're all new members on this panel here, but they took down the information they were going to look into, but we haven't heard anything on that. Hopefully, there is some funding that comes forward, because it is today's price on putting a new septic system in is $25,000 to $30,000. And a lot of average families don't have that type of money to put in. So, hopefully, the ministry comes through, and we'll get some funding to upgrade our septic systems and stop the pollution going into lake areas. Thank you.
Councillor Van Endall?
Oh, yeah, this was... This slide was simply an observation of mine of what we heard in the bear pit session, what we heard from the premier's address, and what we heard from several of the cabinet ministers, was that they all seemed to be in agreement that housing is one of the prime crises gripping the province, access to it, pricing, the price of new housing, and the fact that many communities all over the province can't seem to get development through the environmental approval process quickly enough. So, the fact that so many of them spoke about this independently gave me a lot of hope that they really are determined to cut red tape. The premier himself said they're out to cut red tape, and we're going to be hearing a lot more about that in the future. And then several of the ministers said that they were determined to make sure that more housing becomes, gets built, and more housing becomes available, which was very encouraging, I thought. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any... Councillor Bowman?
Yes, if you noticed that the slide up there, the first one is called the Bear Pit. And I guess should elaborate a little bit on that. The official thing is a ministers forum. And basically, what it is, the ministers come forward and take questions from the floor for about an hour and a half. This year, there were 26 ministers there from the various ministries across the province, and in that time, some 32 questions were put forward and replies were given to them. The only... The moderator is Nigel Bellchamber, who is a longtime politician, community worker in a number of things in his political career, does a great job as a moderator. Questions, basically, that they put forward must be of a general nature, so it's not like somebody comes out and says, "The road outside of my place is blah, blah, blah." It has to be something that affects the general public. And here's a couple of the ones that some brought, the attending, hospital funding, which was brought up. There was a discussion of a centralized program for procurement policy. That could be good or bad, it's kind of hard to see, it's usually the proof in the pudding rather than that. The reorganization of the public health and the new lens systems that's coming out, or the replacement of the lens program, again, that could be good or bad, or it could be downloading on municipalities. Again, the proof will be in the pudding. The idea sounds good, but sometimes you have issues in the implementation. One of the big items was conservation authorities returning to their mandate. Again, that could be good, or it could be bad, depending on how that works out. If it means that the things that they're looking after now is turned down to the lower municipalities, that's an added cost that'll come on us. So, those are all things that you're really not sure how it's going to work out. One thing that came up, there was... Question came out of the blue, and it was put to a minister with regard to our provincial maps that we put out. And the presenter noted that we have a huge indigenous population in the province with various reserves or First Nation areas. None of them are designated on our provincial map, and it sort of caught everybody by surprise. And again, something noted, and I wouldn't be a bit surprised that that'll be something that'll be incorporated on future maps. Makes sense, but why it was never done before, who knows? And I guess the other thing, we had offered to in our presentation to Jeff Yurk, that we would be willing to host any of the projects that they might want to do on a trial basis. That was a good, I think, sort of something that we're putting forward that may stand us in good stead along the line. I'm sure everybody had something different about the bear pit, but those were a couple of things that I saw that I thought were interesting. The other points up there, the Insight Breakfast and the Learning Lunches. Our whole convention is so packed in with stuff going on that even the presenters have to do their presentations during the lunch hours and breakfast. The problem with that is, if you can't get into them because they're full, you have to go someplace else. So, it's difficult. And if you're seeing the ministers, you have trouble making your time available to see some of the other people. So, it's always difficult in that way to get every place you want to go. Overall, always a good convention, there's always something for everybody, and you get as much out of it as you want to put in. So, I think it's a great convention and something most councillors should try to go to at least once or twice in their term.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Verbeek?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, how's that? Thank you. So, yeah, the bear pit was a really good opportunity for us to see the Q and A with the ministers, hearing questions from the floor, and seeing some deflect their answers and some answer them directly. Key phrase that was echoed by many ministers was actively engaged. The breakfasts, the lunches, and the sessions had a lot... A number of educational options. I'll comment on a few that I was able to attend. The global market's rise of plastics, it was... There was a really great range of presenters. We heard from representatives from the federal level, the provincial level, and also from a few municipalities that are leading the way in this field. We heard about how the global market is demanding a better final product. Important first steps in us obtaining a better product is, it begins right at home before it enters our stream. One of the presenting communities that's supposedly ahead of the curve was commenting on how the OOPS stickers are really great first steps in educating the community. Main take homes from that one were that we must do better at cleaning up our plastics before we recycle them, and that the plastics polluting our streams and our waterways are really coming from our litter, our balloons, our straws, our plastic bottles, and the garbage being dumped at the sides of the roads, our fields, and our ditches. Also, that communities will have to do much homework prior to attempting to implement municipal plastic bans. It's a really complex issue. Like, one example was that the plastic on cucumbers extends the shelf life from days to weeks, whereas, you know, a lot of communities want to jump right in and ban plastics, it really has to be examined first. A presenter from a company that was selling cameras for school buses at one of my breakfasts, "Well, this device records traffic when the arm is down," and he assured us that the device will pay for itself with revenue generated by the tickets. Some communities have started with one or two, and then they've purchased more with money made from the law-breaking drivers, putting schoolchildren at risk. Perhaps in the future, we ask our school bus drivers and our police if our municipality requires this type of proactive safety measure. Another breakfast I attended on cyber breaches, well, it was nice to hear the presenter tell reps from across the province that Essex was on a leading edge, setting a great example in this regard. We heard from our Minister of Health, Christine Elliott. Well, much like the premier and some other ministers, she announced great changes to come in our healthcare. She received large applause when she stated, "Let me be clear, it's absolutely not our intention to privatize land ambulance." She informed us funding changes coming from 2020 and would have safeguards built in to prevent downloading. Presented much like shiny baubles and glittery gifts, she was with these announcements. She spoke of connected provincial public health teams assembled to lead our 10 new health units that will be replacing our current 35. This, she explained, is being done through consultation with municipalities and leaders of the new health unit teams for best community input. Later this day, I sat with a gentleman that is leading one of our 10 regional, our new 10 regional health unit teams. He was perplexed by a lot of what she said. For instance, he and other team leaders felt in the dark. They had been... They had not been included in any consultations as of yet, but understood that they were to receive direction on how to move forward with implementations. He had learned that day that it would be sent, the guidelines would be sent soon. He felt that what she was saying didn't completely line up with what was actually happening. Now, since this speech, we have learned about many cuts to our basic healthcare services. Many of the tests that are being cut will only be available for fee now, affecting most of our most vulnerable. Our county council just learned that the cuts to Sunparlor will be loaded onto municipalities. This is kind of why some of the speeches felt, well, hers particularly, felt like smoke and mirrors to me. The conference, initially, I thought five of us attending might be a little overkill. I spoke to neighboring municipalities, however, who sent their entire council and their staff, and it became clear to me that we all gained different... We all got different take homes at our meetings, we all made new connections, great building blocks for us all moving forward. And I often mention that our staff and our team, on our team Essex, are exemplary and so professional, but I really want to take the chance to thank Jill Brett, who makes our travel arrangements, again, as she has for each conference I've attended. Her arrangements for my travel and my accommodations and the conference registration were flawless, allowing me to focus on just being... to focus on just being present and engaged as possible through my trip. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Is there any questions from councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank council colleagues for attending AMO on behalf of our municipality and those that couldn't make it. It was really informative. And I'm not sure I'll think of plastic on cucumbers the same going forward now. So I have heard two councillor Verbeek's point about cameras on school buses. I have heard a request from residents about that. So I think that that's something we should note and file and dig a little deeper when time permits. Maybe there's still time to stick it in our strategic plan. So just thank you to everybody for going.
Thank you, councillor. Any other councillors? Okay, thank you. I need a motion to receive the report. Please, Deputy Mayor Malas and councillor Bowman. All in favor? It's carried. Thank you. Thanks to all the councillors that went. It was, it was a real learning experience, and I think we learned a lot there. So we brought a lot back, and hopefully we can put some of these things forward. Thank you.
8.1 on the agenda. Community Services, 2019-34. Allocation of capital budget funding for the purchase of an automatic floor scrubber for the Harrow Arena. For receipt, the council authorized the noted reallocation of $3,058 to cover the full costs thereof.
I get a motion, please. Moved by councillor Bjorkman and a seconder councillor Vanndol. Any questions? All in favor? It's carried.
8.2. Community Services Report, 2019-35. Transfer of lease for the operation of the skate sharpening and pro shop at the Essex Centre Sports Complex. This is together with Bylaw 1852 to authorize the execution of a lease agreement for, between the town of Essex and Richard R Brett. That said report be received, that Bylaw 1582 be repealed, that council approves an agreement with Richard Brett to operate the pro shop for a three-year term, and accordingly that Bylaw 1852 be read a first and second time and be provisionally adopted this evening.
Get a mover, please. Councillor Yarren and councillor Verbeek. Any questions on this one? All in favor? It's carried. Thank you.
8.3. Fire Report, 2019-02. Agreement for Fire Dispatch Services with the city of Windsor. This is together with authorizing Bylaw 1854 for receipt, and the council authorizes the town to enter into a formal agreement with the city of Windsor for the current fire dispatch services, and accordingly that Bylaw 1854 receive three ratings this evening.
Have a mover, please. Mover councillor Bjorkman, seconder councillor Bowman. Any questions? Deputy Mayor Malas.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Chief Arnell. So there's nothing different in this report. It's just straightforward, just spelling out what we've been doing all along. Is that correct?
Through you, your worship. That's correct. We've contracted services from Windsor Fire Dispatch back in the early 70s. They've been dispatching the fire service here in Essex and other communities within the county. And what we've done is just formalized an agreement so that it's better for all persons involved. We have an agreement, we'll be able to work from that, and we have clear expectations. So.
Thank you. Councillor Verbeek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To our chief, I know you and I have had a couple conversations about some, I'm not sure if they're glitches, but there's certain areas, pockets that you had said had been identified and were, you know, being dealt with because they're being dispatched because of a wonky address. Will that, like you had said, that was kind of being investigated, each little pocket? And how will that be affected?
Through you, your worship. We're still, we're going through the same procedures that we have in the past. So we work with Windsor Dispatch, and they work to, we work with OPP. We try to determine what the address is, what the problems are, and we get them fixed up. But Windsor Dispatch has been very, very good with us, and they get them things fixed for our dispatching. So for fire-wise, we're in really good shape. It may be some problems with EMS or whatever, but we're in really good shape with fire, and they jump on them right away for us.
Yeah, chief, there's no difference in this agreement. It's just that we didn't have a signed agreement before. It was just verbal, wasn't it?
Through you, your worship. That's correct. It's exactly the same thing, other than we've listed expectations.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? It's carried.
8.4. Corporate Services, 2019-04. Modernization Grant. That said report be received, and that council approves the allocation of the grant funding in the amount of $620,201 as follows. $610,527 to LED conversion of streetlights, $6,106 to the reported problem online service request system, and $3,468 to playground software.
Could have a mover, please. Councillor Vanndol and councillor Bowman. Any questions? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if our CEO can answer this, or if this is an Elk Solutions question, but something that I've been coming across for the last six months, and it's really hard to even get a solution for it all the time, is streetlights when they're out. Because utility operators aren't necessarily out at night. I've had a couple subdivisions, Sunset Gardens and around Arthur Street have out streetlights, and then Queen Street have out streetlights, and I don't drive around. So just wondering if, when we put in streetlights, is there any technology that anybody's aware of where they have a sensor in them, where they can report, you know, automatically report back to the utility that they're out? I don't know if anybody's heard of it. I'm just throwing it out there while we're getting new streetlights.
Through your worship, I can speak to that a little bit. Yeah, I mean, of course, there's all smart technology out there. We're looking at what that upgrade, what the benefit would be versus the cost to upgrade to that version of that technology if it's needed in all areas. Yes, there's out there. In terms of a reporting, I guess, reporting matrix, that's something that we can work with Elk. I think the board members, I'm not sure if it was brought up to the board or from the board, as a discussion point at the Elk meeting in terms of that reporting problem, if it's online. I know other, other energy companies have those types where you simply, you know, go to the website, it's website-based, clunk in your address, where the light is, and then things get taken care of. We can talk to Elk about that. We've got our customer service reporting issues that are going to be going live on our website, and maybe it's something that we can work together with.
Other questions? Councillor Vanndol.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, could administration remind us a little bit about which urban areas are getting these new lights, when the contract goes out? When can people expect to see the new lights on their streets? How much power we're going to be saving? I mean, I'm sure there'll be a big power savings. How much is that? Et cetera. Thanks.
Through your worship, just a little history with respect to LED lights. We were one of the first municipalities to start placing LED lights, but we started, you know, piecemealing it, right? As the light came up, we would put an LED one. There were some budget years where we would replace maybe a street of LED lights. But, you know, you clunk along at 10, 20 a year, and you end up in a situation where we're in, where we're still, I think it's approximately 40% of our lights aren't converted yet. You've noticed municipalities around us that have done the wholesale approach and just said, "You know what? We've waited so long, we haven't done any, let's do them all." So that's what got us to this point with respect to that. In terms of, we're working through procurement on the best strategy for purchasing the lights that we have, the majority of installed already. So all our LED lights that we have in place are a certain type. So we're working through procurement on how we move forward with the purchase of the lights and then installation of them as separate. So I don't have a specific date for you. I guess in my mind, as soon as possible, when we can clear up those procurement issues to be able to move forward. I think I answered everything else.
Yes, thanks very much.
Anybody else? Oh, Deputy Mayor Malas. Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you, through your worship. In the, in the report itself, that says about the streetlight conversion, that the lighting system will alert maintenance personnel of outages to allow for a swift and actionable repair. So it's actually, that's part of the price in there. So that's supposed to be able to help us identify and get them replaced. One of my questions, I'm just wondering, are there, is this enough to do all the lights in town? And we've got $600,000. Like, are we doing them all, or are we doing our downtowns? Are we doing our rural roads? Like, where, where are these lights being taken care of?
So the, the funding that you noted in there is the grant funding. It's not the cost of the job. So that's the amount of money that we can allocate towards the cost of the job. So no, that will not cover it, but we recognize the quick turnaround in savings by converting. And that's something that we'll report back on. You know, the, it costs you not to do it at this point. The buyback period is so quick because these lights are so efficient that it makes sense for us to do this wholesale conversion. So, but the plan is to do them all, is not to, you know, no more piecemealing this together. Let's do them all. And like I said, we're working through those costs in terms of what that total cost is going to be.
So further to that, so we've looked at changing the lights in the downtown areas for streetscape, and it would actually be a different light head than the light heads that are there now. So just wondering if this is also tying into that we're going to be able to do our downtown streetscapes, will we try to partner this so that we only buy one light, we buy the right light that's going to fix, fit the pull that we're after going forward?
Through your worship, yes, we're incorporating all those future visions so that we only do this once.
It did spark a question. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Nupsey. So when we have a housing development that comes in, have we, or are we going to be changing our standard so that the development or the plant, the developer has to put in the same kind of LED lights that we're putting in?
Through your worship, we've been, any development that's happened recently, they're all LED lights that we've changed our practice in terms of what's required for developers coming in. So they, they, they're already following where we're headed.
So ones that will say this light is burnt out or needs some work done to it?
Through your worship, no, I guess on that, the lights that are put in are LEDs, not with the controllers, but that's something I know the Development Standards Manual review, you know, that sets the standards for anything that we develop, that's something that we're going to look to incorporate into that.
Thank you. Anybody else from council? Okay, all in favor? Okay, it's carried.
8.5. Economic Development Officer Report, 2019-10. Re Essex Tourism Events Fund Application. For receipt, and that council approves the distribution of $1,000 of funding for the applicant, being the Urka Harvest and Horses Festival.
Need a mover, please. Mover Deputy Mayor Malas and councillor Verbeek. Any questions on this one? Seeing none? All in favor? It's carried.
8.6. Is Planning, 2019-49. Interim Control Bylaw for Specific County Road 20 Properties. And this is together with Bylaw 1856 to implement interim control affecting those certain lands in Ward 3 of the town of Essex. For receipt, and that Bylaw 1856 be read a first, a second, and third time, and be finally passed this evening.
I have two things to report this tonight, Mr. Mayor. Both myself and Ava attended the Youth Council Coalition of Canada yesterday for the Federal Election Roundtable for Youth. It was a very informative event that focused on the issues that mattered the most to the youth of Essex County. Also, I would like to say, I just want to remind everyone that this Friday, October 11th, is EDHS's homecoming. There will be a football game followed by live entertainment.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor, okay, thank you. I need a motion received to report. Deputy Mayor Malas and councillor Bowman, all in favor? It's carried. Keep up the good work.
Item 11.1 is correspondence to receive. If its council's wish, they could receive these items in 11.1 on consent, but then note or specify, or speak to any particular matters there listed in 11.1.
We'll do them all, and if somebody wants to speak on one, we'll come back. Deputy, or councillor Vanndol and councillor Bjorkman. Any questions on any of them? Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I know council members can see the agenda, but people watching this and people in the audience can't, they don't have readily available in front of them the letter from one of the business owners in Harrow. I just want to point it out that businesses are in residence in Harrow and Colchester, which I guess is worse than Harrow with power outages, are really looking, just I would say, for a public statement in some sort of message from our council that we've heard that there's concerns. And although we can't dictate to Hydro One, and we can't, we don't have a lot of pull with Hydro One, I think we can owe it to our residents to show them that we're listening. So this letter from one of the businesses in my ward that I represent, where it's, the power flickers haven't happened in like three weeks. So let's knock on wood that they don't happen again tonight. But this, this business is saying they can no longer sit back and watch our pocketbooks get hit. The power outages off and on have caused us to lose three treadmills, one computer, one power supply, our FOB system, which locks and unlocks our doors, two power supplies to other cardio equipment. We are now 1,600 in losses, and, you know, they reside in Colchester, and the grids are different, and it's a nuisance to say the least. And so they want somebody to be held accountable. And people are having a hard time getting repeat insurances, repeat insurance claims when they claim their insurance once for power flickers, and that's fine, but then when they go back, the insurance company is suggesting not to claim it again because they're running into difficulties there. Subway in Harrow's had issues, the deli in Harrow, their freezers have blown, and there's a list that's growing of people that are losing private fridges, private microwaves, TVs. So it's just something that, as a councillor, I'm just recognizing that there are issues out there, and we have been working with Elk to get some communications on there. Anybody that has power issues, I cannot stress enough, to call your utility company. If it's Elk, call Elk and get it registered. If it's Hydro One, call Hydro One and get it registered. If your complaint does not prove to be satisfied, if they don't call you back, or if you don't like what you're receiving, you still have an option to go to the Ontario Energy Board to get resolved. So as a council, I just think that we acknowledge that our residents are having issues. I mean, I can't speak for anybody else up here, but I'm acknowledging that our businesses are having issues, and that I think this council is doing everything we possibly can to resolve it.
You sit on the board with me, and Deputy Mayor Malas sits on that board. And we know, we know there's problems, and a lot of the problems are through Hydro One feeding into, into the Harrow Centre. So I think we are pushing, we are pushing Elk to try to pressure Hydro One. But you're really fighting, you're fighting an uphill battle there, and hopefully we can win. But we, we as board members, we are on top of it, and council, I think council supports that too. We don't want to see outages either, and I hear them too. I do hear them. And like I say, though, sitting on the board, we are pressing, we are pressing to get, to get improvement on the in-feet coming into town. So that's where the problem is. So I agree with what you're saying. Thank you. Councillor Bjorkman.
Thank you, through your worship. And I would just like to piggyback on that, say the same. I live in Colchester. I own a business in Colchester. I'm a council representative for Colchester, and we've, we've lost things in our business. I call Hydro One, I email Hydro One, then I call them again. I get a response that is I get a, a response that is just a generic, "Well, just keep track of what it is that's happening and send it in to us." And just, no, I need detail, I need somebody I can talk to who can help me out. And it's, it's very difficult. So I think it's, it is incumbent on us as representatives and as the town to represent our people to this conglomerate. Because I tried in my name, in my business, and in, as a councillor, and I don't get anything back from them. So I understand the frustration, people send it to me. The one thing that we have been told is, when it goes out, like keep a log of when it's going out, and, and be specific, because I've seen the ones that come in from our emails, it's the same time that mine goes out. And they go out two or three times in a row, and 20 minutes later, we were coming home every day and the power, power failure thing was flashing on the, on the, on the microwave. So it has been better, I'm with you there, whatever it is that's happening. But it, it is very frustrating for the people that live out there that are dealing with that. One other item on here, I noticed this building code services transformation, there's an invitation to participate and provide feedback. I was just wondering if we have anybody representing us going to the meeting in Chatham on Wednesday with regard to that building code transformation?
Laurie, are you going to go? Or Chad?
Not personally, no, but our chief building official and building inspector will be in attendance at that meeting.
Great, thank you. Go ahead councillor.
And just one more thing, I noticed there's a certain Nelson Silveira on this list with this. You got that? Okay, then I will pass that on to you. Making sure.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to return to the, the hydro issue. You know, from my 21 years in the community, I've had hundreds of blackouts and brownouts myself, and, and from my research, it is almost entirely the fault of Hydro One. And in my career as a reporter, I, I wrote many stories about hydro problems in, in the city of Windsor and, and other parts of Essex County, and it's almost impossible to get them to answer any complaints. Like I, I know Ford had to threaten to close its West End aluminum smelting plant before they could get action. And, and the crucial aspect is, is Hydro One is cheaping out at this end of the province. They're saving their money so they could spend it elsewhere. And I've been told by, by Hydro One employees in years past that some of the circuits in Essex County are the, among the worst in Ontario. And I, I suggested in a, in a meeting a few weeks ago that maybe businesses might look at banding together for a class action suit. I mean, when you're dealing with a, a giant bully that's impervious to complaint, hauling them into court might be the way to go. And it's, so it's, might not just be recording these complaints, but some of the affected businesses may want to contact one of the three or four big class action lawsuit firms that operate in Ontario. There's one in Windsor, there's one in London. And if they think it has merit, that might be the way to get Hydro One to upgrade its facilities around here. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to speak on 11.1.5. And Nelson, on behalf of council, congratulations to our Economic Development Officer Nelson Silveira, who recently completed the Certificate in Economic Development Program at the University of Waterloo. This program will help Nelson continue to grow his career while providing him the tools to help make Essex a top designation for investors. The certificate is also the next step towards the official professional economic development designation. So congratulations Nelson, on behalf of council. Really good. And if you want to come forward, I... Yes, I need to have a vote on the last, all in favor, no, I need a vote, all in favor. We had a mover and a secondor. Kerry.
11.2 on the agenda, sorry, my apologies, Mr. Mayor. We passed by item 10 on the agenda. Any updates from county council this evening?
No, none for me. No, nothing, okay.
Then we can move to 11.2, correspondence to be considered for receipt or receive in support. 11.2.1 is correspondence from the municipality of Hastings Highlands, dealing with mandatory septic system reports. That the said correspondence to, from the ministry, or sorry, from the municipality to the Ministry of Health and Long Term Care, advising the Ministry of their concerns over currently unavailable septic reinspection information be received or received and supported, and if so, supported that the appropriate letter be sent.
Have a mover, please? Mover? Receive and support. Deputy Mayor Malash, a secondor, please. Councillor Bondi, any questions? Councillor Beartman.
Yeah, just wondering, probably to our CAO, is this something that, that affects us, our, our area in any way? I, I read it and I didn't really see what it meant to Essex and our area. So I'm just wondering if there's something with that report that you can expand on?
Chris, can...
Through your worship, I think anything to do with septic tanks is ultimately going to affect all the rural municipalities in Essex County. The reinspection and, and the, the issues around it, I mean, it's been a kind of a black hole of, well, you have a septic tank and we're assuming you know it's good, or you keep it in good practice, so definitely, but it's, it's for the betterment of the community and the betterment of the environment to ensure that there's a process and resources behind that process, more importantly, to keep on track of things.
Deputy Mayor Malash.
Here, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment on that too, and I, and I did the same thing, councillor Beartman. But the way it's going to help us is, right now, our bylaw enforcement persons have no way of knowing other than if they were to go into somebody's yard and actually dig up to see whether their septic tank is in working order or not. But what they're asking for them to do in this report is that as, when, when a person, it's recommended that you have your septic tank cleaned out every five years, generally. So those persons on septic tank, what they're, what they're asking for is to have the sanitation company that's cleaning out the septic tank to do a brief inspection of the septic system, or the septic tank itself, I guess, and throw back a report to the municipality saying that, yes, we believe that this septic tank's in good condition, or should be inspected, or, or so on. And that would save our municipal bylaw enforcement officers or building inspectors to go out and have to dig up on their own and check the system. It gives them an indication as to where they should be looking or, or where they can stay away from.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malash. Any other questions? Councillor Van Endall.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This concerns me. I, I'm a little worried that, that this might have some unintended consequences if people know that they have a bad septic system and that their, that the company that comes to pumps it out is going to be reporting its condition to the ministry. People will no longer pump out their septic systems, some people. And also, it, it could, you know, open a Pandora's Box of, of bad systems that all of a sudden has a cascading effect of huge expenses for people with bad systems. Like I would hate to think that I'm responsible for that by supporting this letter from some other town. This, this worries me. I, I'm not sure we should rush into supporting it so quickly. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Any, Deputy Mayor Malash?
I'll, I'll give a counter to that. So a lot of, a lot of reasons why your septic system's not working well is because you've already gotten to the point where you're letting it go 15 years instead of the five years that you should be. They're recommending every five years in order for your system to continuously run the way it should run. If you go 10 years, you're taking a chance. If you go 15 years, you're even taking a larger chance. But eventually what happens is if you don't have your system clean, it's going to back up into the house. You're going to know it. You're going to have problems even trying to flush your toilet, water going down your sink, the whole works. So you're, you're going to have no choice. You're going to have to have somebody come in. Doesn't mean that your septic system or your septic tank is destroyed, but it will give the municipality an indication that, and, and it's not necessarily being passed back to the ministry, it's for the municipality to have a record of what's going on in their community. So right now, we could probably, we could probably have a letter sent out to those individuals after five years, something like that, that makes sure that the systems are being cleaned out properly. Reminder, it's your time, type thing. So that our septic systems are being properly maintained and are not pushing fecal matter or whatever is going to get into stormwater systems. So I, I still think that we should be pushing for this to hap, happen, because it's going to, it's going to come down at some point in time that the ministry is going to come back to the municipalities and say, "Look, you have to get a better handle on what's going on in your municipality." And we're already going to have that ability if, if we're getting this reported back to us. But it's the province who has to step in and say to the sanitation companies, "This is something you have to do. This is part of the issue. Your job to get that back to the municipalities."
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any other questions? Councillor Bondi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank the deputy mayor for taking a strong stance on this because I agree with you. And, and this may not be the perfect model going forward, but this is going to start a conversation. And we heard in the room, we heard from councillor Bowman that algae blooms, right? And it's septic systems. Tonight on our agenda, we have a holding bylaw for development because of septic systems. So I do believe it's going to get worse before it gets better, and I do believe that supporting this will start that conversation saying, "Hey, as a municipality, we recognize this could be a problem. We have proof that it's a problem. We don't have the tools to handle it." Maybe in the future, for example, we got a climate change position this year by a grant. Maybe in the future, with enough pressure, the province will say, "Hey, everybody gets a, a contract position to, in 2022, and that contract position's going to inspect all your septic systems." That would be fantastic. But we have to start the conversation piece somewhere, and I believe supporting it will. If we have other ideas that we think would be better than this model, we can come up with those and send our own ideas too. So I do think that a brainstorming session, and if we have our own ideas, perhaps like a grant idea saying, "Hey, we would, for the next amount of pocket money you want to give us, give us a grant money for our contract position to inspect this," because we do need to get on top of this as per other items on our agenda as proof. I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you councillor. Anybody else? If I just may add, if you don't pump out your tank on a regular basis, what happens is, you know, your bed, your septic bed fills up, fills up with solids, and, and once that happens, your, your septic system's pretty well done. It's pretty well done then. So I, I would support this, making sure that the, the tanks are cleaned out every five years. I think that's, that, that's good maintenance as far as that goes. And, and you're protecting your, your weeping bed too, at the same time. Once you're, like I say, once your weeping bed fills with solids, you're done. The bed's finished. And then you're looking at $25,000 or $30,000 to replace it, so. Thank you. Any else to this? All in favor of, I'm going to support that too. Opposed? Want to record it? Yep.
11.2.2, that the correspondence from the municipality of Chatham Kent, expressing their support of Legal Aid Ontario's Community Legal Clinics and their opposition to the funding cuts imposed on Legal Aid Ontario, be received or received and supported, and if council so chooses to support, that the appropriate letter be sent.
Need a mover, councillor Verbeek? Secondor? Hands apart, yeah, secondor? Councillor Beartman, all in favor? Kerry. Thank you.
11.2.3, resignation from the Essex Fund Fest Committee, that said resignation be received with regret and that a letter of thanks be sent.
I need a, need a mover for this one, please? Councillor Beartman and Deputy Mayor Malash, before I call the vote. It's, it's too bad that Pam has resigned. I just, if she was here, I'd like to thank her. She put a lot of hours in, into the Fund Fest and, and into the community in general. She's done a lot for this community, so we want to congratulate her and, and thank her for being on the Fund Fest for all them years, so. Councillor Garen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to thank her as well. She's stepping down, she's going to still continue in a volunteer capacity, but as far as being on the board and, or on the committee and making the everyday decisions, she's going to take a step back. Subject to change, we'll see.
Thank you councillor. All in favor? Kerry. Thank you.
Item 12, committee meeting minutes, that all of the minutes listed in Agenda Item 12, together with any recommendations noted, be received, approved, and adopted as circulated.
Have a mover, please? Speak on one item here before I call the vote. Essex Police Services. I, I can just say that there's a new program that's coming out, which is, which is good, and it's to do with mental health. In the past, in the past, if, if, if the force got called to a, a mental health issue, usually they would, you know, put the handcuffs on them like a regular crime and, and put them in a holding cell. Well, the new program through the Ford government, and they just got approved for it, we just found out today, hey Chris, today, we just found out the, the funding is approved. What they're going to do now, they will work with Hotel Dew Hospital, and if they have a situation where it's a mental health issue, they will have a professional with them, okay? And they will take that certain individual to the hospital and get them help. So it's a lot better than throwing them in a holding cell and the next day releasing them. At least they're going to offer some help, so. Yep. I need a vote now, all in favor? Kerry. Thank you.
13.1, that the July 2019 and August 2019 bank payments reports, sorry, bank payment reports each be ratified as submitted.
Mover, please, councillor Bowman and, and councillor Garen. All in favor? Kerry.
15.1, notices a motion.
Any new business? Deputy Mayor Malash.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to bring up two items. The first one is, we've talked a little bit, councillor Bondi's talked about County Road 20 and County Road 13. And we've had a number of intersections that have been investigated through the county. And we've got a couple of intersections that the mayor and I have been talking about over the last little while, when, through county discussions. And what we'd like to do is bring these up, they're called intersection safety audits. And what we'd like to do is present these on behalf of the Town of Essex to the county's engineer department, so that they'll actually take a look at these intersections. And the two intersections that we're talking about right now are County Road 20 and County Road 13, which is Erie Road at, at King Street, but also County Road 20 at County Road 23, which is the Arner Town Line stop. There's a lot of accidents that happen there, and the traffic is pretty fast. There's kind of a blind spot in there too, and the whole works. So if council doesn't have any objections, I'd like to give direction to, to administration to send a letter. And I don't know if we need, and I want to, I haven't checked with Mr. Roget in advance, but I'm not sure if we can just give direction to you on this, or whether you actually need a motion, so I'm, I'm going to ask you that before we move forward on this. a motion, so I'm going to ask you that before we move forward on this.
As a point of order, just before we move any further, under new business, we generally don't ever have anything. Our definition of new business was urgent and minor in the past, so if something's changed, I'd like to know about it. But as far as I know, that's how we introduce new business, that's how it brought forward, otherwise it's in a notice of motion, or it's brought to the mayor on Friday or Monday previous to the meeting, and it's approved.
Thank you, councillor. Maybe you could just make a notice motion.
Okay, so if this, if that's the way that we're going to do, I didn't realize that that's what's up to say on the county for new business, but I'll bring these up under the, under the motion.
Through, through, Mr. Mayor. Under new business, as long as it passes the minor and urgent tests and the chair's satisfied, it could still be addressed as new businesses at this meeting.
Guess it's up to me, and I would allow it. I would allow it.
Okay.
I would allow it, councillor.
So I'd like to challenge that, your honor? Just, I don't know, meets urgent.
So the decision, once again, according to the procedural bylaw, the decision as to what's minor and what's urgent is either up to the chair, or the chair could put the question to the rest of council.
I'm going to leave it to council. I'm going to bring it up to council. I think it is urgent. It's, I really do. I think it's an urgent, it's up to council. I'm going to, if any of the councillors want to talk on the issue. Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Bjorkman, I really appreciate your style right now, but I do really want to get this done. So I do, like, we've been waiting for a long time for the Erie Road, and there was just a whole bunch of comments about the other road, so I will be supporting it for the fact that I think the sooner we get it to them is better, but I really like it.
Anybody else? Councillor Bowman.
I don't think it meets the criteria for urgent myself, so, just my thoughts.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'm just confused as to why this council doesn't know how to introduce new business. I'm not sure what the rules are myself, I've only been here a rule, a year, but I've never seen a council have this trouble on how to put something on the table to discuss. It's, I don't know what to say, it's strange.
Have you got an opinion? Do you want to go forward, or don't you want to go forward, councillor?
I'd like to, I'd like to follow the rules, so could somebody tell me what they are?
Yep. So the new business rules were changed during the last term of council to address perceived issues with business being introduced for the very first time at the meeting without the public having an adequate opportunity for feedback, should council give direction or pass a resolution at that particular, at that first very night that the item's introduced. So the procedural bylaw was amended so that only if the item is considered minor nature or if it's urgent, and usually by urgent, that means that it's something that cannot, that needs to be addressed by the municipality before the next regular council meeting. So normally, councillor Bjorkman is right, there is provision for new business items to be brought to the clerk or the mayor's attention as soon as possible, but there is provision for new business items even being addressed on the day of the meeting, and when those are raised, it's up to the mayor in the chair seat to decide whether it meets that minor urgency or urgent criteria. And then, like the mayor has done this evening, he's opted to ask the rest of council to decide the matter.
Thank you, councillor Verbeek. Would you like to?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't even know if I'm going to be clear here, but I, for one, very much appreciate councillor Bjorkman keeping us in line with procedures all the time. He's very helpful to me and all of us at times. I also really want to see these requests that our deputy mayor is making come into effect quickly. I wonder if, you know, maybe we can just bump it to notice a motion. What's the difference if we do it in two weeks, you know, and then, sorry. Thank you.
You know, there was just a major accident last week at Arner and County Road, County Road 20. So, and there's been several, several accidents there. So do we want to wait two weeks? It's up to council. I'm leaving that up to council. I'm going to call a vote, okay? I'm going to call a vote right now. Who's in favor of listening to it and putting it in place right now? Can I have a show of hands? I'm going to support it. Opposed? Okay, he's defeated, so you're going to have to make a notice motion, okay?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I just, just, or you can't discuss it afterwards, all right?
Okay. We should have did that, council.
We should have did that right from the beginning, you know, instead of carrying, you know, sorry about that, but.
Item 15, the following notice of motion was first presented back at the September 16 regular council meeting and is being brought forward for council's consideration this evening. Councillor Van der Dolen, that administration look at streaming as well as broadcasting options with respect to town council meetings. We need a seconder on that.
Yeah, I need a seconder, please. Councillor Bjorkman, you can speak on it, no? Yep, you can speak on it, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The reason for this is I've been asked by a few citizens that, they didn't make a big deal out of it, just that, are you ever going to stream it? Can you stream it? You know, I don't get that TV station, CFTV, thank you very much. So I heard that Amersburg had started streaming, and then the cost was relatively modest. I'm not sure if it was $20,000 for the equipment and $12,000 annually, or the other way around, but it seemed to be a reasonable price, a small price to pay to have complete and permanent access, high quality, and I understand the administration is working on this, so I thought I'd put it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Any other questions on this one? Deputy Mayor Malash.
Not a question, but a comment. I would be interested in seeing a report come back to us, just like, yeah, see the options and the costs associated with it.
Okay. All in favor? Kerry.
Item 16, reports and announcements from council members.
Deputy Mayor Malash, have you got anything? Oh, Kim Ham?
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Chair. As added to the adopted agenda this evening, councillor Verbeek did give notice of two notices of motion.
Yeah, go ahead, councillor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first is that council direct staff to conduct a study in our school safety zones for all our schools as requested by several residents. And second, are you ready? Okay, is that council look at having a public meeting or putting forth a survey to discuss our police service, as been strongly encouraged and recommended by our OAPSB.
Councillor, yeah, councillor Verbeek, just to your second. Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was brought up.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Item 16, reports and announcements from council members.
Deputy Mayor Malash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if I have to be on the agenda at the beginning to give a notice of motion.
It should be, yeah, it should be introduced as part of adoption of agenda.
Are we going, yeah, it's up to you, Mr. Chair.
Are we going to allow him to do it? Make his notice of motion?
Council?
No? You're going to wait till, huh? Notice of motion? Yeah, yeah, just notice of motion, go ahead. Councillor Bjorkman? Councillor Bjorkman, why?
Okay, I'd like to put a notice of motion forward that we request intersection safety audits at County Road 20 and County Road 23, and secondly, at County Road 20 and County Road 13, and these be presented as a request to county, the county engineering department.
Thank you, councillor. Or Deputy Mayor Malash. New business or announcements? Back to, reports, announcements? Deputy Mayor Malash, you got any reports or announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up, and everybody, please drive safely there's a lot of people on the road visiting families and friends and having some family dinners, so please drive carefully.
Thank you, councillor Garen. Bjorkman?
Thank you, your worship. I want to piggyback on Cameron's announcement about Friday night, the homecoming at the high school. So the game's at 11 o'clock, and after that, starting at 9:30, will be the party in the gym from 9:30 to 1:00, and Big Wiggles playing at the party, so it'll be, it'll be great. It's been great every year. It's a great reunion for all the staff and the students that have been there, so look forward to it and support the high school.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through consultation with some chamber members in our draft strategic plan, I just wanted to point out one thing in public. I did not want to put that in email. On page 13, develop a streetscape improvement plans for the town's urban centers. We already have streetscape improvement plans, so I want to take it a step further and do them, right? So do them. And the chamber is really looking forward to hearing when the actual meeting for the streetscape is going to be, so we can talk about that as council. Another thing in my investigations is, I think, actually it was yourself, Deputy Mayor Malash, that you brought this up. When council sends a letter, say we support a letter banning plastic water bottles, we were talking about getting it listed on our website, that we send out those letters, and I've just had a little bit of time to navigate our new website, and I can't find council letters of support. And the reason why I think it's fitting and I really want to have and see if those letters of support, or I don't know, if we want just letters of support or more on our website is because people are saying, you know, who do you support in the election for a candidate? And I'm like saying, I don't know, but if you go on our website, you'll see the letters that council is sending to the various parties, you can see what's important to our council. So I think that that's something, I don't know if we have to do a notice of motion, not today, but at some point to get those letters back on our website.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Van der Dolen, do you have anything? Councillor Bowman?
Just point out that the Citizen of the Year banquet's coming up very shortly, and tickets will be available at the train station, obviously, and at the, I'll have some at the town hall as well. They're $30 this year, and it's at the Legion game, because that's all you need to know. It's at the end of the month. This is the year of the PANS that have been involved in our communities for many, many years, so it's a husband and wife team this time.
Thank you, councillor. I haven't got anything tonight, so I guess we can move right into.
1851, bylaw 1851, under item 17, to confirm the proceedings from the September 16 regular council meeting.
Mover please. Deputy Mayor Malash and councillor Bowman, all in favor? Kerry.
Under bylaws for three ratings, 1853 being a bylaw to amend 1669, being a bylaw to amends position titles for certain non-union staff of the Corporation of the Town of Essex.
Mover please. Councillor Bjorkman and councillor Bowman, all in favor? Kerry. Mover please. Councillor Verbeek and councillor Bjorkman, all in favor, and thank you very much, and thanks to the staff, and thanks for the audience coming out tonight. And a motion to adjourn, please, councillor Garen and councillor Bjorkman. All in favor? Kerry. Thank you, councillor Bjorkman.